...made of a different ilk.
Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of June 6th, 2017 is now called to order. The time is 6:04 PM. At this time, we do request that all electronic devices be turned off or be put into the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and also of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Thomas Jacob Barfield, TJ, is this evening's student representative. He is a 10th grader with a 3.3 grade point average at Riverdale High School and will begin classes at FSW in the fall as a duly enrolled student. TJ is a varsity wrestler as well as a varsity football player. He told me that he got up at 5:00 this morning, went to football practice, and then proceeded to go to five hours of wrestling practice.
Oh, jeez.
His mom's in camps. He is very proud to be a school board representative and has enjoyed the opportunity. TJ is the son of Thomas and Beth Barfield. Welcome, TJ.
Thank you.
Also in the audience this evening supporting TJ is a friend of his, Mike Presley, who's from the school board in Hendrick County. Welcome, Mike. And tonight, we have special guests. We have Boy Scout Troop 101 in attendance with their troop leader, Amanda Jobs, who is the committee chair and merit badge counselor. Tonight's meeting attendance will help them to earn their citizenship badge. The Boy Scouts in attendance are, and you can call when I, you can stand, please, when I call your name. Max Stone, Denver Snyder White, Arjun Masharwar, Sean Shackelford, and Larry Jackson. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, one acknowledgement, one special presentation to the board, public comment, consent items, which include one item under executive services, 13 items under academic services, four items under business services, four items under human resources, and 11 items under operations. Also, 10 superintendent's recommendations, as well as three items for public hearing, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. Patrica and seconded by Mr. Toiber. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion carries 6-0. Mrs. Patrica will deliver the invocation, after which Mrs. Giovinelli will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise now for the invocation.
As the school year comes to an end, I ask that we bless all in this district as we seek to end our year with the grace you so generously provide. We give thanks for the students and the faculty, the administrators, and all who have contributed to this year of nurturing and growth. We affirm all the positive moments of insight, of the excitement of learning, of accomplishment, of creativity, of laughter, of a sense of community. We recognize the times of struggle, of difficult work, of misunderstanding, even of failure. We give these to you for transformation, so they can become seeds that will find fertile soil. As we leave for the summer, may we take with us the knowledge that you will keep us all in your embrace, so we may rest and be restored, and so we can continue in the ongoing discovery of your love.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. This evening, we have one acknowledgement, our character word for June. TJ?
Character word for June is cooperation, working together for a common purpose. The quote is, "Cooperation" is spelled with two letters, "we," or W and E, I'm sorry. And the person who wrote that is George M. Verity.
Okay. I think we're waiting for it to be displayed, so we'll hold off on that. Thank you. Thank you very much. This evening, we will have a special presentation to the board regarding site selection for school MMM by Ms. Ruby Daniels of Alva Inc. Ms. Daniels, would you please approach the podium? Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Madame Chairwoman Fisher, and board members, we appreciate this time to speak. My name is Ruby Daniels, president of Alva Inc., and my speaking partner is Don Ruane. We are here to tell you about our proposal to combine environmental science and agricultural science into one course of study as a special focus for our high school, in addition to regular school curriculum. The proposal is for the Alva site to serve Lehigh-
Daniels, can you pull your mic down a little closer to your, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
The proposal is for the Alva site to serve Lehigh and Alva students. I am a retired elementary school teacher of 36 years and have been involved in agricultural and environmental activities all of my life, both in my teaching career and in my personal life. We make this proposal because we are deeply concerned about the environmental problems challenging our planet. A warming earth, extreme weather patterns, loss of biodiversity, species decline, pollution of water and soil, to name a few. These problems are global, but they also exist here in our own backyard. I remind you of our polluted river that periodically has an outburst of blue-green algae blooms, which pollute our river and emit toxins that endanger human and animal life. The smelly fumes drive away our tourist and our economy suffers. This is a perfect illustration of an environmental principle. Everything is connected to everything else. Knowing that, it's difficult to study the environment without studying agricultural practices, and it's difficult to study agriculture without studying the environment. To us, it is logical to combine the two fields into one course of study to bring to end the oppositional relationship between environmentalists and farmers. We see only benefits coming from that approach. Collaboration will develop broader and deeper knowledge of the serious problems threatening our earth's sustainability and the challenge of feeding a growing population. It should result in better, best management practices for the environment and agriculture, as well as better technology. Applying STEM to this program will give our future adults critical thinking skills needed to analyze new information, to make choices that support better stewardship of the environment and better life choices. In environmental, we dominated the news last week, we underscored the need for environmental and agricultural literacy. They are desirable goals for our students to achieve by the time they leave high school. Many scientists who study the earth's environment believe that we must take measures now to reverse the problems that exist before they become so large we can't turn them around. From Florida Agriculture Magazine, we learned that by 2050, 36 years from now, there will be nine billion people inhabiting the earth. That means today's agricultural production must be doubled to meet this global challenge. Food insufficiency is present now in our communities. Just look around where you live to see an unprecedented number of food banks. A biblical parable tells us, "Give a man a fish, and he eats today; teach him how to fish, and he eats every day." Knowing how to grow a backyard garden will address individual and family food insufficiency. The Alva site has the resources to support teaching this course. It has ample space, and it has surrounding resources, river, creeks, swamp, and wetlands. The Eco Agro Park is a half-mile away and will be available to public and schools. There are Conservation 2020 lands that abut the site. With contractual agreements between the school district and the board of county commissioners, those lands could serve as outdoor classrooms. Lack of environmental and agricultural education in our schools concerns us. Solving our environmental and agricultural problems will take very smart, highly educated people in those fields, as well as a citizenry that is environmentally and agriculturally literate. Therefore, we advocate for environmental education because students need to learn about the earth's natural systems and how they work together, and how human activity impacts that. We advocate for agriculture education because students need to know where their food comes from and how producing it impacts the earth's systems. We advocate for a high school in Alva because Alva residents have made building schools and educating our children a top priority from the beginning of our earliest days as a community. After a series of small wooden frame schools, the Red Brick School that is still being used today was built from local materials by local people in 1914, then gifted to the Lee County School District. The Corps of Engineers wanted to remove our bridge in 1960s. We fought against it. We fought to keep our bridge to protect our schools and our community. Now, Don Ruane will continue with more points of interest.
I come here by way of a 40-year career as a journalist, covering local, county government, transportation, planning issues, and communities such as Lehigh Acres and Cape Coral. I have no property or business interests that are going to be affected by this site decision. Much ado has been made over the dollars and cents of the site selection. Sometimes, though, it's wiser to pay upfront a little bit more to get the cutting-edge, world-class education that you want, just as someone might stretch a little bit to get the four-year degree versus a two-year degree. Alva's utilities costs probably will land 3% to 4% of the total construction costs. Amortizing and refinancing this course over the life of the school will make it easier to handle. Adding utilities now also prepares the site for future uses, such as the need for an elementary or a middle school in the east zone that was mentioned in this afternoon's briefing. Why wait for tariffs, materials, labor costs, and other factors to rise when you can plan ahead here and build ahead? Bringing water two and a quarter miles, not 10, as some people claim, also makes pressurized, clean, potable water available to the people along the way. This can lead to enhanced property values, more fire protection, and ultimately lower home insurance rates. Now, you're talking about positively engaging the public. We're not convinced yet about the busing costs. As growth fills in between Alva and Gateway, the costs should begin to equalize. We've addressed other points in the CD and previous material that we submitted, so I'll move on to a point made by a site selection committee member when she wrote an email to the district in April. She said, "To me, site selection has to be based on more than just construction costs." The school's impact on the community will last for decades, so it's vitally important to look at it from that perspective as well. The district must do its best to place a school in a cost-effective location and enhance the surrounding community at the same time. So I ask you to think about Vision 2020 goals. Parents in the northeast corner of the zone will be more likely to engage with the school if there's a high school near them. Residents around the other site already have three high schools nearby that they can engage with. This proposal also opens doors of engagement for businesses that want to provide internships, cooperative education programs, and training, as well as perhaps buying rights to name stadiums, buildings, laboratories, and libraries. Property values could improve as people realize world-class learning is going on nearby, and they'll literally buy into the area to be needed, whereas the primary competition for this site is building out with properties well-established by earlier growth. More jobs are possible where opportunities are not abundant and transportation to job centers is not available. More jobs can follow as more rooftops appear and retailers, such as the new Dollar Store at Greenbrier, recognize the potential of the area. Meanwhile, the Colonial, Lee Boulevard, and MLK area has a commercial plaza and prime locations for development because of the heavy traffic that passes through there each day. The equitable distribution of tax dollars and facilities is worth thinking about. For 45 years since Riverdale High School absorbed Alva High School, northeast Lee County residents and students, or students, have been riding some of the longest bus routes to this high school, and taxpayers have faithfully paid for those distant schools to keep them going. It's time for a fairer distribution of classrooms. Let's leverage our tax dollars where we can. Millions have been spent for Conservation 2020 lands around the Alva site. Our proposal makes the use of those preserves for education through collaboration with Lee County. The taxpayers who supported Conservation 2020 in the 2016 election will applaud that. The northeast zone will grow with this school over the next 50 years. The long-term impact on the community will be greater than any upfront construction costs. So you have a golden opportunity here to put Vision 2020 into action. We foresee a seamless education for students of all abilities continuing from elementary and middle school into the high school, and from high school into college programs. We envision students literate in environmental and agricultural science, and we hope they will apply their knowledge wherever they work, in an office or in the fields. We hope they will also provide leadership to address issues that threaten our economy and quality of life here in southwest Florida. We've looked at the sites and concluded Alva is the best suited to help us graduate students such as these. Our bold and audacious enthusiasm for this vision confuses and perplexes some parents and others in support of the alternative site. One blogger recently asked online, "What's at stake for these people?" He went on, "While those in Gateway have a four-year outlook on a new high school, Alva Inc. is thinking about the next generation and the generation after that." The blogger never hit the nail on the, or hit the nailhead as hard as he did that time. Our proposal goes beyond the site. It offers a vision of what this school can be in its unique setting. It addresses issues vital to Lee County's environment and tourism industry, and prepares students to make decisions about their career and life matters. That's why we're working so hard for the Alva site and a high school that will serve generations after generations. So we say, "Let's get Vision 2020 off the paper and into the ground. Let's get to work in Alva." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Daniels and Mr. Ruane. We appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, will you please address the agenda item of public comment?
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Ms. Fisher, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment to the school board are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. Speakers are expected to act in a respectful manner. Those who fail to do so after being warned by the meeting chair may be required to leave the meeting. Disruptive attacks on individuals are prohibited. Ms. Fisher, I have 11 cards this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anybody on the right side of the auditorium who has not completed a card and wishes to speak? Please stand and state your name. Thank you, Alice. Anyone on the right, on the left side of the auditorium, please stand and speak.
Ellen Erickson.
Ellen Erickson.
Amy Hall.
Amy Hall.
Jeff Fowler.
Jeff Fowler.
Adam Starler.
Pardon me?
Adam Starler.
Adam. Is there anyone else?
Andy Erickson.
Andy Erickson.
Tiffany Powers.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay. Three minutes. Okay. Mr. Martin, please call the, oh, I'm sorry. Nathan?
Bitter.
Bitter. Thank you.
Levi Bitter.
Levi?
Bitter.
Bitter. Okay.
And Sammy O'Leary.
Sammy?
O'Leary.
Aya.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Standing there.
Honey, can you speak up a little louder, please?
Alexa Murphy.
Alexa Murphy. Alexa Murphy. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we have more than 20 speakers, so now the time allotted will be two minutes per Mr. Martin, please call the first card.
Alexa Murphy.
Alexa Murphy. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we have more than twenty speakers, so now the time allotted will be two minutes per speaker. Mr. Martin, please call the first card.
With a large number of speakers, I will call cars in groups of fives. When I call your name the first time, please proceed to the microphone here. The second time I call your name, you may proceed with your comments. The first five speakers are Mark Castellano, Denise Eberly, Dan Powers, Gina Heck, and John Heck. Mr. Castellano.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. My name is Mark Castellano, and I am the president of the Teachers Association of Lee County. This afternoon, we talked about HB 7069, and I didn't quite get to say everything I wanted to say in the three minutes. I'm going to try to get as much as I can in these two minutes. HB 7069 is simply the worst piece of legislation in a very long line of terrible legislation that the Florida House and Senate have foisted upon Florida's public schools over the years. It lines right up there in my mind with Senate Bill 736 from 2011. So what are some of the horrors of this bill? There are some fifty bills that were, could not pass through the regular legislative process, some, many of them, and so our legislative leaders simply took them, put them all into this one bill, despite our constitution says, "One topic, one bill," in Article III, Section VI of our state constitution. They've learned this trick over the last few years where the things that they didn't, that they didn't get during the session, let's just lump it into one big bill and shove it through at the very end. This was all done behind closed doors in the very last days of the session. Many, I'm going to give you a few examples of some of the things. They're the best and brightest. Probably the stupidest piece of legislation I have ever seen, could not get passed through the normal legislative process, and has now been expanded for the third year in a row to $214 million. This is a bonus program that is based on an idea that both Democrats and Republicans claimed when it first appeared two years ago as the stupidest idea they have ever seen. In addition to other bonuses that are in this program, I want to point out simply, these are the carrots that they're waving in front of us as they beat us over the head with a stick, and that's exactly what they're doing with this bill. This is a blatant charter school giveaway, and they're doing that while they're starving our public schools. It's another even bolder attempt to usurp our constitutional rights to collectively bargain through Chapter 447 of our state constitution.
Castellano, your time's up, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Denise Eberly?
Thank you. Good evening, thank you. My name's Denise Eberly. I live in Alva, Florida, and I'm here about the MMM school site. I'd like to start off with saying, I think we've, I've been to many of these meetings, and we've all come to know that the Alva site has a very small number of students. It will cost, it'd be much more costly, millions of dollars more because of the lack of infrastructure, and it would likely take as long, if not longer, to build Alva school than it would Gateway. I know you have your estimates based on permitting times, but then when you have to take in the factors of the additional infrastructure that needs to be added, it would be quite much a long time longer. Also, I'd like to add, I don't know what the concept is, if it's build it and they will come, because we don't have the population there. You already know that. The numbers have been cited to you of how many students are in the area between two and five miles. So I don't know, I don't, I don't know about the East Lee High School or East Lee High School, if that was maybe a motive for building out there where you did to bring it, to put it way out there in East Lee, hoping that maybe the population would follow the school, but it hasn't. I'm a taxpayer. I don't want my tax money squandered and spent, you know, needlessly, and it's build it at Gateway where it's needed. They have the population, they want it, they have the infrastructure, everything's already there waiting for it to be built. They have the population. As far as, you know, what you've heard about people commenting on both schools, when the Alva people come up, they're retired elderly empty nesters. You haven't seen any families come up here saying they want that school there versus Gateway. Look, you know?
Thank you, Ms. Eberly. Time's up, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, but please don't applaud after the speakers. Thank you.
Dan Powers?
Hi, I'm Dan Powers. I live in Alva. I'm sorry, I'm a little unprepared. I was stuck in the rain on my way over. I agree with Denise, as well as two hundred other people in Alva. We're trying to protect the rural integrity of our area. I'm not going to go over all the details again, but the Lee High, or I mean, the Gateway site's fairly a little cheaper. The Alva site's going to be much more expensive for busing over time, and I've been to, all these meetings time and time again, and all the factors point to Gateway as well as they clearly want it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gina Heck. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, as you learned in your briefing materials and meeting earlier this afternoon, nearly every factor in every committee studying the high school site selection favors Gateway. Four committees have considered the two sites, and the vote from them was sixty in favor of Gateway and seventeen for Alva. The construction advisory committee scored the Gateway site over Alva by almost seven hundred points, and the school district staff you trust to help you make these decisions told you today Gateway was the better choice. It is, and for many reasons. For instance, today, right now, there are fifty-five hundred students ready to move into a high school in the five-mile radius around Gateway High School. Alva only has 1,010. We've heard the suggestion that the overlap with Lee High Senior High School isn't factored in. Fifty-five hundred students mean you could fill both those high schools and still have fifteen hundred kids looking for a place to attend. As you stated, if money were no option, the district will be building both schools because of how overcrowded the east zone is already, and it's only getting worse. We've also heard the suggestion that Gateway already has a high school with the charter school in the community. Gateway has decided that it is not an option. Only ten percent of the entire K through twelve student body at the charter school is from Gateway. The teacher turnover is way too high for these kids to leave prepared, plus only a hundred and five students in the five-mile zone attend the charter high school now. The Gateway area is growing quickly. Census shows our population jumped from twenty-five hundred in the year 2000 to eighty-two hundred in 2015. A seven-hundred-home neighborhood is being built now on Tree Line, another neighborhood planned for thirteen hundred homes off of eighty-two. There will be more. By contrast, Alva actually lost population between 2000 and 2015, going from twenty-two hundred to twenty-one hundred. You have a choice. You can build a new high school where the students currently are, or you can build one where they are not. Which one do you think is a better use of what little money we have? Thank you.
Thank you.
Speakers six through ten are Jonathan Heck, Julian Heck, Steve Murphy, Jessie Vitter, and Robert Vertries. John Heck.
Thank you, sir. In terms of a construction project, Gateway is as close to a plug-and-play as you can get. It's no secret that the school district has taken a lot of heat recently for being over budget in Benita Springs, but I have a question for the board. How likely are you to be over budget in Alva when you have to dig up ten miles of highway to lay a water main? Or bring in other utilities from miles away? Or build a sewage treatment plant on the site to the tune of ten to fifteen million dollars because there's no sewers? Or sink massive water storage tanks in the ground to fight fires because there are no fire hydrants near the site? These are just a handful of examples of expenditures the Lee County taxpayer will have to absorb for a school in Alva that are simply not necessary in the Gateway community. When Gateway was developed, this site was planned for a school. All utilities are in the ground up to the site, water, sewer, and electric included. Fire hydrants with unlimited pressurized water are mere feet away from the site. Emergency services are approximately one mile with plans to build a brand-new facility within half that distance. Sidewalks are currently in place, and bike paths are also in place for miles. If Alva is selected, every taxpayer in Lee County should be outraged at the boondoggle that would be in Alva High School. Choosing Alva for a high school at this time would be nothing short of irresponsible. I cannot think of a single reason to build a school of this size in a community who largely does not want it with a population that cannot support it at a cost that will be tens of millions of dollars over and above the cost of the Gateway site. Unlike the majority of Alva, Gateway wants this school. Gateway will support this school. Now all you have to do is choose Gateway. Thank you very much.
Jonathan Heck.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Heck. Hi, my name is Jonathan Heck, and I'm going into the fifth grade at Gateway Elementary. I love going to my, to school in my community with all my friends from Gateway and Lee High. To be honest, I am nervous about middle school after this year because all my friends will be at so many different schools, but with the high school and Gateway, we can all be together again. Gateway is such an awesome place. We work together and help one another, unlike what I see from Alva. All they do is argue. Where, where are the kid, where are the Alva kids? Do they even want this? I hope the school board and committee members see the immediate need for a high school in Gateway. Gateway High School is our future. Thank you for your time.
Julian Heck.
Hi, my name, hi, my name is Julian Heck, and I am going into the third grade at Gateway Elementary. I really love my school and my community. I have so many Gateway and Lee High friends that I go to school and play sports with. Please choose Gateway so we can go to high school together, too. This is my third meeting, and when I listen and look at the slides, it just doesn't make sense to me why they would put the school in Alva. Gateway High School is our future. Please, please see that we need the high school in Gateway now. Thank you for, for your time and for listening.
Steve Murphy.
Ladies and gentlemen, Lee County School Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. What I think, and many others think, the Griffin Drive and Gateway is the best choice for the building for the next high school. We just heard from Alva Inc. about their support for the site in Tuckahoe Road and saw that it was a presentation from a nonprofit group, and its mission is to preserve and protect a unique historic rural agricultural and equestrian ambiance in Alva, Florida. But you, interested in pushing for a high school that brings in two thousand students and hundreds of staff every day, but what you may not know is most of Alva Inc.'s board members live in the north side of Colloca River, and they want to build a high school on the south side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessie Vitter.
Hi, my name is Jessie Vitter, and I'm hoping you choose the Gateway location for the following reasons. The extremely large student population in close proximity to the site. Utilities nearby waiting to be hooked into. We are such a populated area there that I do believe it will alleviate the overcrowding you're having at some of the other high schools in the east zone, where that same situation I don't believe would happen if you build in Alva. You're going to get a little pull off of your Riverdale, Lee High Senior, you know, school choices, and that'll loosen that up. They have, with the Gateway site, there's six Lee County fire stations within six and a half miles, so I think it's important to have many first responders available due to natural disaster or a man-made problem if you're going to have twenty-five hundred or so people in the same location, and that's not to be said for the Alva location. It's surrounded by a beautiful community with sidewalks accessed throughout that would also be used for cross-country teams and so on and so forth. Nearby amenities like gas stations, sports fields, restaurants, things that high schoolers need. They need to fill up their cars with gas. They like to go to Subway or McDonald's or whatever. The growth has already occurred in Lee High, I mean, in Lee High, Gateway, Tree Line, the surrounding areas. We don't know if growth will occur in Alva. I hope you do not choose the Alva site for the following reasons. A significant lack of nearby students. No accessible utilities. No sidewalks. Narrow roads on Joel and Tuckahoe. Too many students being bused for a long distance. The high schoolers already have to get up so early and bear their homework load, and some have jobs and stuff. The bus ride's unnecessary. Lack of nearby first responders. Lack of nearby amenities for the high schoolers such as the gas stations, the restaurants, things like that, things their families will also like to go to when they attend sporting events and so on and so forth. An overly specialized proposed curriculum that will not fit many students. Some students are into technology, sports, ROTC, leadership programs, and many other things. While some people may enjoy that as an extracurricular, it would be a specialized group. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Robert Vertries.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Just going to tell you a little bit about me. I'm a relatively recent transplant down here to the Fort Myers area. Came down in 2011 when my wife came down here to look for a house. We settled on the Gateway community and have fallen in love with the area. Already had family down here in Gateway, and now I've got two sisters and a brother that live in the area, and it's a fantastic place to live, and all it's missing is this high school. I work with kids in the Gateway community four nights a week, most weeks, some nights five. The Gateway Soccer Association, Gateway Flag Football, have kids going in and out of Sherman Soccer Park there, four nights a week, five when the season's on, in addition to Saturday and Sunday afternoons. I see six hundred kids there on the weekends, and these kids are all looking for someplace to go to high school in a few years. Clearly, Gateway, I think, is the best place for them. I hope that you guys will come to that same conclusion as well. Again, I appreciate all the time and effort you've put into this and feel confident that you will come to the right conclusion that the high school needs to be placed in Gateway. Thank you very much.
Anthony Thomas.
Talk about putting the cart before the horse. We're talking about another school, and we've got all of these problems with the Benita School. The news press is reporting today that the Atkins administration didn't do their due diligence, didn't even see after they, I mean, this is amazing to me what is going on. So they do all of this stuff, they say they do their due diligence, and now we found out we don't even own the property of the entrance to the school. I talked to Mayor Fisher, I talked to Steve, the superintendent didn't even tell them. So we have this stuff going on. They tell the news press that they found out about this thing and when they did the permit. When you look at the thing that they submitted with the permit, they did that in February. So if you found this out in February, why the hell didn't you tell the school board members? Obviously, you didn't find it out in February, so you're not telling the truth to the news press and thus not telling the truth to the public. We need to know what did the superintendent know and when did he know it? We have a situation going on right here where it is incompetent. This board needs to fire Reggie Snell. He obviously don't know what the hell is going on here, and we are just going down into la-la land here. I think this, we need to put some brakes on here.
Anthony, please hold your comments. I need to provide you a caution, please. Please avoid personal attacks and inappropriate language. You may proceed, you have fifty-five seconds left. Thank you.
Not personal attacking anybody, but we have a situation here where we've got a $1.5 billion business. I can tell you, I've been around this school district a long time. We didn't have all these problems like this when Browder was here. Maybe you all need to hire Browder to come back as a consultant to supervise the superintendent and his staff as they go in about doing this rebuilding of schools, because you all are not supervising them. We've got to have some real grown-ups stand up here and do this job. It makes me so angry. We need answers on this thing with them, or with this school, before we start talking about building any more other schools. Thank you.
It's issue, those are all the cards.
Thank you. Mr. Martin. Alice, will you step forward and say your complete name? Thank you.
Alice Weatherford, and I am from Alva, and Alva does want the school. The main reason we want the school is because we do feel the need for it. We have students in Alva. The reason that we want the one on the south side is because that's the property you already own, and there's no sense in buying any other property. We discussed earlier today that the projected growth indicates that we may need as many as nine new schools in the next five to seven years. If we take the property at Joel, which is over a hundred acres, and we combine it either as a mega-high school that was suggested, or as a combination of high school and middle school where properties could be shared as far as some of the elective classes, the cafeteria, the busing, that would be economically sound. We could take the existing Alva school, which holds about 1,035 students. It currently has about 500 elementary students. We could double the elementary size, and that would take care of one of the elementary schools that would be in the need. So talk about using tax dollars wisely. If we put the school at the Alva site, we would take care of three of those nine projected school needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll call a few people to line up, like Mr. Martin did. Ellen Erickson, Raimi Hall, Jeff Fowler, Adam Sparrick, and Andy Erickson. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I've lived and worked in East Lee County for forty-five years and volunteered in the schools. I still do that. My kids have gone through the schools. I'm very familiar with the area. I agree with the comments that came before me about building the school in Gateway. I live in Alva and I'm in favor of Gateway. Let's be responsible for our tax dollars and spend them where the population is. We don't need to put a school way out in the corner of the county and bus all these kids. You've heard the figures on the buses. It would be at least eleven more buses to go to Alva. We'd have to buy the buses and spend thirty-five thousand dollar a year per bus to get the kids out there. Plus, they'd be on the bus for a long time. It's not fair to them. You've heard about the water and sewer utilities. The sidewalks are available in Gateway. Alva is not a sidewalk community. It's a rural community. It's not a place where you walk along the side of the road on the sidewalk. It's different. The neighbors of this site do not support a high school there. Perhaps the purchase of that property was wrong to start with. Maybe it needs to be traded for a twenty-twenty and another piece bought somewhere else. It's a bottleneck at Tuckahoe. It's a narrow area. It will be worse with the school there. Let me just go over the bullet points. Student population clusters, Gateway. Walkability, Gateway. Traffic flow, Gateway. Safety, Gateway. Less buses needed, Gateway. School site concerns, Gateway has fewer. Site development costs, Gateway would be less. Community support, you can see it's Gateway. You don't see parents coming up here with their kids from Alva. We want more money in the classrooms. Please don't put it in busing and build a school so far out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Raimi Hall. Thank you, board members and superintendent, for allowing me to address you tonight. Tonight I want to bring up an issue that I feel like needs attention in Lee County. It's something I was just made aware of this year, perhaps since this is the first year I've had a high schooler in Lee County. But the issue is the valedictorian and salutatorian titles. Um, this board voted a few years back to do away with those titles and to go with the Latin honor titles. And I'm gonna ask you to vote to bring them back in tonight. I understand that this was a trend that was done by many counties years ago to do away with valedictorian and salutatorian, but I think you'll find that many districts are reversing that opinion and voting that title back in. I believe that our students in Lee County that earn those academic titles deserve to be recognized at graduation. They deserve to speak. I don't know if this board is aware that the way you speak at graduation is a vote. Students campaign to speak. This turns into a popularity contest which in turn is just another competition. And I understand one of the reasons the board did away with those titles was to avoid competition. I believe a GPA is something students work hard for. In fact, Ms. Fisher just announced our student representatives' GPA tonight and that's awesome. Congratulations, by the way. Colleges care about valedictorian and salutatorian titles. I think you'll find that it's a huge thing. Class ranking is a huge thing. The school my daughter attends, Fort Myers High School, is a wonderful school. We have two sports teams this year that won state titles. Can you imagine if those teams worked all season to achieve the, the right to get to the state playoffs and got to the state playoffs and they said, hey, you know what, we're just gonna call all the district champs state winners. That would be terrible. Athletes get recognition in this district and I am asking this school board to give our scholars the recognition they deserve. I believe valedictorians and salutatorians should have the right to speak at every high school graduation. So I'm asking this board to please look at the vote.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Your time's up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board for giving me a chance to speak. My name is Jeff Fowler. I am a Gateway Elementary School parent. I want to tell you about a community in Gateway that is primed and ready for a high school. Parents in Gateway area are ready. Around second grade, we start asking each other where our kids should go to middle school. Uh, next is the choice of high school, which is nerve-wracking because they're spread out all over the east zone. Uh, the school choice lottery is a constant battle for families in Gateway. If you look, if you look at the statistics, it's apparent there is an inadequate, inadequate choice of schools offered to the east zone when compared to the other two. It will be, it will be a relief to know that our kids and the friends that they make in Gateway and the surrounding areas can reconnect in high school. Uh, the community in Gateway is ready. Weekends in Gateway are filled with a flat flag football league that, with about two-hundred-and-fifty players and a soccer league with eight-hundred players. Friday nights and Saturdays, all the fields of the Sherman Soccer Complex are in use and lined by members of the Gateway and the surrounding community. Imagine now taking that enthusiasm and harnessing it into a high school. Uh, we'll be there when our kids play sports, or when our kids perform. We'll be there when our kids win awards and the community will turn out for fundraisers, which is key. The businesses in the Gateway are ready. We have a unique set of businesses, businesses that could provide, uh, interesting opportunities for the students of Gateway High School, to name a few. We have Gartner, Alta, the airport, and Jet Blue Park, uh, and then, that are just down the street, and, uh, many small businesses that would like to be involved and support the school. So with the support of parents, the community, and the businesses, uh, Gateway High School will quickly become one of the, the district's shining stars, a leader academically as well as athletically. So you get the chance to make that happen with your vote on June twenty-seventh and please choose to build the school at Gateway. Please choose to build Gateway High School.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Adam Scarlotta. Um, ladies and gentlemen, the school board, let's really talk about the, some of the cost of building this new high school. Already the school in Benita is over fourteen million over budget. High school, the so, money is so tight and is a very key consideration when it comes to this new high school. For starters, utilities, all the hookups you would need are right there at the edge of the Gateway site, uh, just waiting. In Alva, they are miles away and some have, will have to be built as part of the school, as part of the overall costs. Um, that's money we just don't have, you just don't have to spend. Um, the site development costs, as you stated, for your staff, shown last week, at the high end for Gateway would cost about one-point-four-six million on the low, and on the low end, um, for Alva, two-point-nine-three million just to prepare the land. That's savings of almost one-point-five million, maybe more. Transportation is, is another key consideration. The Gateway site is expected to need twenty-four buses. They will run shorter routes with more students in the seats. Uh, Alva needs projected thirty-five buses. They will travel longer distances with fewer students onboard. The difference alone is estimated at four-hundred thousand per year. Uh, bus, your busing to Riverdale, Lehigh, and east zone, and, and East Lee High, East, East Lee School, excuse me, would also change and therefore likely add to the cost savings. Roads have been a concern for both school sites. In Alva, they are worried about Tuckahoe, which isn't wide enough for cars and buses to coexist daily. That could be a real problem. In Gateway, there are already concerns about State Road eighty-two because of its dangerous reputation. But the time the school re, by the time the school opens, eighty-two will be expanded to a six lanes. The district can be a part of this process now and any, the district can be a part of the process now for any infrastructure needs you might have or might want to include. Your staff already said buses will be used to get students from north side of eighty-two to the school. Eighty-two is not gonna be an issue. Plus, the school access points will mainly be on Griffin Drive, so eighty-two is not really a factor for consideration at all. You should also be able to build a cheaper high school at Gateway than Alva and should end up with a high school that has lower operating costs. This choice you're making doesn't impact two, the two communities involved. It impacts every taxpayer in Lee County now because it's their money you'll be spending. By choosing Gateway for the next Lee County's high school, you can show them that you're spending their money wisely. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Before Mr. Erickson speaks, I'll call Debbie Lee Powers, Nathan Bitters, Levi Bitters, Sammy Aleef, and Alexa Murphy to line up. Thank you. Mr. Erickson.
Evening, board. I'm sorry. I apologize that I was late. It was a three-car accident, really bad on Palm Beach Boulevard. That's what happens. People don't watch out in the rain.
Glad you're here safely.
I'm a dollar, dollar person. You know, I look at we're losing money at the school board is, uh, losing meaning have to build all these, we don't have the money for it. And, uh, I look at it that it's cheaper to build that gateway than it is in Alva. Alva doesn't have the utilities, you've heard. We don't have any sidewalks. And the busing is eleven buses more and no one can walk to school anyway because there are no sidewalks. And even if, I understand it's two-hundred feet, you can put a sidewalk in, uh, or mandatory to do it. If you do it two-hundred feet, you go to one person's property. So one kid maybe can walk to school. The rest will have no sidewalks at all. So they all have to be bused. The way I look at it, I don't know, you can't walk on Joel. It's a two-lane road. And, uh, there'll, there'll be kids being, and there's ditches on each side. So I'm all in favor. I live in Alva and I'm in favor of Gateway because it's a smart way to go. And thank you very much.
Sir. Debbie Lee.
Howdy, ma'ams. Howdy, sirs. My name's Debbie Lee Powers. I live on the east side of Tuckahoe. Let me paint you a quick little picture of my road. It's a two-mile-long, one-lane dead-end road. It has oaks overhanging our road. We have cattle. We have orange groves. We have horses. We have chickens. We have pigs. We have roosters. You name it. We have a creek that our neighbors, excuse me, I'm nervous. We have a creek that our neighbors go swimming in occasionally. What we love to do at nighttime is listen to the whippoorwills and watch the stars. I'm not making this stuff up. This is why we all move there. It's rural. We love it that way. We don't want to be citified. I used to live on fifteen acres by the old Iona Schoolhouse before the landlord sold the property. God brought us to this place six, seventeen years ago. I want to die there. I want to die there in peace and quiet. I was a percussionist in high school, in junior high and elementary. I know how much dang noise a school can be. I don't want to hear the, the noise, the buses, the, all that sounds and all that. We have one way into our road and one way out. The other side of Tuckahoe, yes, has packing house and styles, but you, now you're gonna infringe on people's property. You're gonna cut off some of their property to expand the roads. We can't get two cars without having to pull off to the side. Another point to make, Charleston Park, they are at the end of my road, but they are on off of eighty. Those people are poor people. That's two miles from the school proposed area. Those people don't have a lot of cars or transportation. There's no roads or sidewalks, rather, for those kids to travel on. What about the animals? That cougar that Amy Bennett Williams posted was behind my house. There are bobcats. There are scrub jays. There are gopher tortoises. There are all kinds of bobcats and hogs. And them, they're wild. They're there for a reason. Alva is the last rural area in Lee County. Please keep it that way. We are not ready for a high school. And the only people in Alva that want it, they live on the north side. They're the Alva Inc. people. There's only a few. Us Alvanians that live on the south side do not want it. Please don't infringe on our, our livelihood. This is how we like it. Thank you kindly for listening to me.
Thank you. Nathan. Nathan, you can pull the microphone down if you need. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nathan Vitter and I live in Gateway. I love to play sports and be involved in activities at my school and in my community. I am hoping that you choose Gateway for the new high school. I would love to attend a full-size Lee County public high school that has all the sports and activities the other county high schools have. I would also like to be able to continue going to school with the friends and classmates I have been with for years. I'm asking you to please choose Gateway. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Levi.
Hi, my name is Levi Vitter and I live, and I go to Gateway Elementary School. At school, we practice the seven habits of happy kids as a part of our leadership program. Today I am practicing, practicing habit number one, which is be proactive. Gateway and the surrounding areas have many, many students that could use this high school. I am asking you to please build a high school in Gateway so that my friends, my classmates, and I have somewhere near our homes to go to, to go to school when we are high schoolers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Sammy.
My name is Sammy Aleef. I live in Gateway. I also have two brothers and a sister that go or will go to school in Gateway. I am asking you to please build the high school in Gateway. Our area of the east school zone is extremely populated and could really use a school. Please choose Gateway. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alexa.
Hi, my name is Alexa Murphy. Yes, both areas want a high school, but who really needs it? Gateway's closest high school is Varsity, which is not very close. Parents would have to drive there every day or kids would have to ride the bus every day for a long time. Just think about it, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for sharing your opinions. Um, I think we hear a big message here and we appreciate you taking the time out to come and tell us about where you live and why you think the school should be in your area or the other area. Okay. So next on the agenda is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business or tabled items portion of the agenda? Mrs. Morgan.
I have none.
Dr. Cuckle.
None.
Mr. Toyber. Ms. Patrica. Mrs. Giavennelli. And I have none. Is there a motion then to approve the consent i, agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Cuckle and, no, moved by Ms. Patrica and seconded by Mrs. Giavennelli. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six, six, nothing. Now we have superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Atkins, will you state your first recommendation, please?
Yes, I recommend board approval of agreement with Florida Virtual School to continue offering students in grades six through twelve full-time and part-time virtual education opportunities. The total funds expended will not exceed six-hundred thousand dollars and will be funded by FTE generated by virtual school students. The agreement is effective July first, twenty-seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen, unless terminated by either party as outlined in this agreement. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute related documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Cuckle, seconded by Mr. Toyber. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero. Next recommendation?
Yes, next recommendation, I recommend board approval of the service agreement for speech, language, occupational therapy, and physical therapy services to Soliant Health Inc., Community Rehab Associates, Speech Rehab Services LLC, Boca Speech Center LLC, and SWFL Speech Therapy at an estimated expenditure of nine million dollars for a period of July first, twenty-seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move, moved by Dr. Cuckle.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Patrica. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to piggyback Osceola County School District, RFP, to U.S. Food Service for the distribution and procurement of food and non-food products for the power-buying group for the period of July first, twenty-seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen, at an estimated annual expenditure of fifteen million, five-hundred thousand dollars, with an option to cancel deemed to be in the best interest of the district. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Toyber.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Patrica. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero. Dr. Atkins, number E.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to extend by a hundred-and-eighty days the bid for the purchase of bakery goods awarded to Flowers Baking Company of Bradenton, Florida LLC for a period of July first, twenty-seventeen through December twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen, at an estimated expenditure of three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Toyber, seconded by Mrs. Giavennelli. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval of the school bell times for the twenty-seventeen-eighteen school year as presented and authorize the superintendent to adjust school bell times plus or minus fifteen minutes for the board-adopted bell times for the twenty-seventeen-eighteen school year to meet the educational needs of students and to improve the efficiency within our transportation system where and when possible than anticipated cost of a hundred-and-sixteen thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Patrica, seconded by Mrs. Giavennelli. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero. Dr. Atkins?
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to renew the bid for petroleum products to Howe Oil Company, Inc., and Pombal Oil Company, Inc., as primary and secondary vendors for the final renewal period of July first, twenty-seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen, at an estimated annual expenditure of five-hundred thousand dollars pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Cuckle.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Toyber. Any discussion? Seconded by Mr. Toyber. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero. Dr. Atkins?
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to award the bid for glass materials repair and installation to Gateway Glass, Inc., as primary vendor for the period of June 6, 2017, through June 5, 2020, with renewal options for three additional one-year periods at an estimated annual expenditure of $1,300,000 upon the written agreement of the vendors and the district. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Toyber?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Giavanelle. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero. Item J?
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to piggyback Collier County School District bid for AC parts, equipment, and supplies awarded to Johnstone Supply, Naples Armature Works, Tropic Supply, Inc., and United Refrigeration, Inc., for a period of July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, at an estimated expenditure of $900,000, with an option to cancel deemed to be in the best interest of the district. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all documents.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve, board members?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Patrica?
Support.
Supported by Dr. Cuckle. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to renew ITN for indoor air quality, environmental consulting, asbestos-led abatement, microbial remediation, remodeling, and painting awarded to American Management Resources Corp. and Fresh Air Solutions of Southwest Florida for the final renewal period of July 25th, 2017, through July 19th, 2018, at an estimated expenditure of $2,800,000 pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Cuckle?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Giavanelle. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero. Final recommendation. Dr. Atkins?
I recommend board approval of the total project cost for centralized energy plant of Ida Baker High School, Gulf Elementary, Intermediate Gulf Elementary Primary Learning Center, and Gulf Middle Multiple Phase Project Phase One in the amount of $3,421,899. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Toyber?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Patrica. Any discussion? Yes, Dr. Mr. Toyber?
Chair, this is just, I'm going to be approving, supporting this motion tonight. This is just another one of our projects that Mr. Law and his team, along with Dr. Atkins' direction, to put in, to be smart with what we're doing on the operation side and actually consolidating four power plants into one and using the ability to put in high-tech equipment to actually capitalize on the energy savings. Our energy-saving costs and transportation costs are very, very crippling to our operations. And to be able to reduce that to be the best in the state is one of our goals in our 2020 vision. And I think it's a good job and I'll be supportive.
Thank you. Any other further discussion, board members? Okay, then, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero. Dr. Atkins, will you please present your recommendations for this evening's public hearing items?
Yes, ma'am. The first recommendation, I recommend board approval of the adoption of 2017-18 Parent Guide and Code of Conduct for Students, grades pre-K through five, and the 2017-18 Parent Guide and Code of Conduct for Students, grades six through twelve. Documents are reviewed annually and adopted with, to provide the guidelines that establish the procedures to address improper behavior and to ensure a safe and orderly environment for students and staff. The effective date of this adoption shall be Wednesday, June 7th, 2017. Next recommendation is I recommend board approval of the 2017-18 Code of Conduct for Adult Students to provide the guidelines that establish the procedures to address improper behavior and ensure a safe and orderly environment for students and staff. The effective date of this adoption shall be Wednesday, June 7th, 2017. Finally, I recommend board approval of the contract renewal for Pivot Education, Inc., for Pivot Charter School, a sixth-through-twelve-grade school covering a term of five years from July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2022.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Now, we will recess this regular school board meeting and open the public hearing. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider approval of the adoption of the 2017-2018 Parent Guide and Code of Conduct for Students, grades pre-K through five, and also grades six through twelve. Approval of the 2017-2018 Code of Conduct for Adult Students, and finally, approval of the contract renewal for Pivot Education for Pivot Charter School. At this time, the public is invited to speak on these three items. The time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone in the right section of the auditorium who wishes to address the board? Anybody on the left side want to address the board? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of June 6th, 2017. Dr. Atkins, please restate your recommendations for this evening's public hearing items.
The first recommendation is I recommend board approval of the adoption of the 2017-18 Parent Guide and Code of Conduct for Students, grades pre-K through five, and the 2017-18 Parent Guide and Code of Conduct for Students, grades six through twelve. Documents are reviewed annually and adopted to provide the guidelines that establish the procedure to address improper behavior and ensure a safe and orderly environment for students and staff. The effective date of this adoption shall be Wednesday, June 7th, 2017.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mrs. Patrica, supported by Dr. Cuckle. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval of the 2017-18 Code of Conduct for Adult Students to provide the guidelines that establish the procedure to address improper behavior and ensure a safe and orderly environment for students and staff. The effective date of this adoption shall be Wednesday, June 7th, 2017.
Thank you. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Toyber?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Patrica. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero. And finally, Dr. Atkins?
Last recommendation, I recommend the board approve the contract renewal for Pivot Education, Inc., for Pivot Charter School, a sixth-through-twelve-grade school covering a term of five years from July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2022.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Patrica and seconded by Mrs. Giavanelle. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero. Next on the agenda is board members' comments or reports. Mrs. Morgan?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody who came to speak on behalf of Alva or the Gateway sites or against them. There's been a long conversation with the community, the board, the district administration about these sites. And I appreciate especially the students who came to speak. I know it's not easy to do that. So I'm grateful that particularly for the reference to Stephen Covey's Seven Habits and the one habit to be proactive. Thank you. I also am concerned that there seems to be an impression that we are $15 million over budget on the Benita Springs High School. The budget set for that high school was $50 million. The budget to be spent on that high school is $15 million, $50,500,000. I think I'm correct on the amendment. This continued presumption that we are $15 million over budget is inaccurate. And I simply wanted to make that clear. Those are my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Dr. Cuckle?
And I support what Ms. Morgan said about appreciating everybody who has come forth to speak one way or the other about the high school. These are big decisions for us. All of your input is important.
Thank you. Mr. Toyber?
Chair, we had a pretty good discussion at the briefing meeting and Mr. Costellano talked about it today in the public comments, and I thank you for that, Mr. Costellano. We have a situation that our governor has on, hasn't even been put on his desk yet because they're kind of waiting and playing games. But there's a bill that's going through the state legislature that went through the House and the Senate through a bully technique in a way that's never happened before in the state of Florida. And it's called House Bill 7069. And it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be a funding bill. It's supposed to be about appropriations. And it has so much in the bill that actually relates to education, nothing to do with funding. But it's actually changing the policy and how things are done in public schools. And all of it, pretty much all of it, is parts of legislation that certain people wanted for different reasons. None of them good. Most of them for personal profit, to give money to our charter schools. Taxpayer money going to private entities, having, setting rules up for public schools, and it doesn't apply to charter schools. And the list can go on and on. None of these bills would have passed on their own merit, going through the proper legislative procedure. So the powers-to-be just put it into a conforming bill and snuck it through and pretty much forced the legislature to pass it. So now we're asking Governor Scott to veto that bill and send a message that the way you want to do things for the Florida taxpayers is to put it on the floor, put it up for debate, let all the interested parties have a voice, let the people that put you in office get a voice on the bill before it actually comes up through underwater, you know, submarine-type of technique. Tomorrow at 9:30 in the morning here in this boardroom, the superintendent will have a press conference along with our board chair to actually speak to the public to try to get everybody to call your governor, email your governor, have your friends call the governor and tell them to vote no on HB, House Bill 7069. And they'll actually give you reasons why. When you hear all the things that they're trying to do that will affect your children and affect Lee County, take away control from the state and, I mean, from the local, our board and our superintendent, and put it up in Tallahassee where they have no idea what's going on in Lee County, we need everybody's help to vote, to call Governor Scott. So if you would like to come down at 9:30 tomorrow and hear more about it, or any of us after the meeting, but please, call Governor Scott and just say no on House Bill 7069. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toyber. Mrs. Patrica?
I completely support what Mr. Toyber just said. I also wanted to point out the recognition, I was very impressed by the recognition by so many of our public speakers about our capital needs. Everybody seems to understand that we have very, very limited resources in order to build the schools that are needed in the near future. The conduct of the students, you young people in the audience who took the time to come to the microphone, the way you conducted yourselves here this evening was very, very impressive. You should be very proud of yourselves and your parents should be very proud of themselves, too, for the way they've raised you and given you the ability to present yourself so well. And also, these students are not going to have that learning slide during the summer because I see that they all had paper in their hands that they had written out. So there's an educational benefit to what you did here tonight as well. So you should really be proud of yourselves. To the board, I have a couple of things. First, I'd like your permission to write an op-ed and hopefully get it published in the news press as soon as humanly possible about the issue of 7069. And Mr. Martin, would it be permissible for me to send it to them and them agree to put their name on it or not? Would that be a violation of sunshine?
I think probably the best approach is just to ask for their approval for you to prepare the document at this point and then forward it to them. And if they have any objections, to contact me.
Okay, so can I get a feel from the board as to whether that's okay with you?
Yes.
I've got a pretty good, pretty good relation with them as well. Is that okay?
Yes, please do. Thank you.
Okay, and then finally, Mr. Martin, during your comments, if you could address what you talked to me about with regard to the permissibility of the use of Parent Link for information regarding 7069, I would appreciate that. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrica. Mrs. Giavanelle?
Just want to thank all the students that came out tonight and everyone that spoke for both Gateway and Alva. We are definitely have thought long on this, so we are excited that we will maybe be making a decision soon. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Giavanelle. Okay, TJ, would you have any comments for us this evening?
I would just like to thank everybody for coming tonight. I'd also like to thank the school board for giving me the opportunity to come and see what it's like to be a schoolroom member. And I would also like to thank Mike Presley for coming tonight, and that's all.
Okay, thank you for being here. We appreciate that. And I will just say thank you to TJ, not only for coming here tonight and being our student representative, but for serving all year long on the Student Advisory Committee. The Student Advisory members have presented us with a lot of excellent information, and we were able to take some of their suggestions and do good things with them. So we really appreciate our kids. We appreciate all the speakers tonight who are our partners in education. And we really thank you for taking the time out of your busy evenings to come and speak to us. I'd like to thank Boy Scout Troop 101 for being so patient and sitting through this whole entire boring meeting. And we look forward to speaking with you after the meeting this evening. So thank you also for being here. And just a little bit of addition to what Mr. Toyber said, and I thank you for that, Mr. Toyber. You know, when we look at deals that are made behind closed doors, we have to question that. We want you to know that what Bill 7069 does is it takes money, Title I grant money, away from the poorest of children. It takes your taxpayer dollars from public schools and gives it to charters and profit-making companies. And also, it bonuses a select few people, not based on their performance, but based on old test scores. And that does not help instead of giving raises to our teachers and helping us with our teacher shortage, which is a nationwide issue. So please do take the time to ask your friends to contact Governor Scott by mail, by email, or by phone, and ask him to veto Bill 7069. Continue to stand up for our kids, our employees, and our community, and I thank you for that. That's all I have this evening. And Mr. Martin?
Yes, Miss Fisher, board members, first with respect to the use of Parent Link to address 7069. Actually, Ms. Patrica, I did share that information with each of the board members, which, that advice, which is that since it is a purpose closely related to the educational mission, it can be used for that purpose. One other issue I wanted to address was with respect to the Benita Springs High School property and the due diligence done with respect to that property before it was purchased. There was a survey obtained to ensure that the property purchased was that that is represented. And the survey did show this little strip of land, that's now the subject of this conversation, being within the property that the person, that the school board was purchasing. So due diligence was done. The survey did not have accurate information as to this issue. So now staff is attempting to address this issue to resolve the mistake.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. And finally, Dr. Atkins?
Well, I feel good. You all have addressed and stole pretty much all my thunder, which is actually fantastic. I appreciate all the comments relative to 7069 and also the comments about Benita Springs High School. You know, we're continuing to be really excited about what's going on down there in Benita Springs. And then finally, also, Mr. Toyber, the comments about the centralized chiller plant out in the Cape. Very important because you, as we see more of this, you're going to see our energy savings go down. I just, what I would like to do is first of all, thank our speakers for coming up and advocating for these educational issues. I think this is what we have missing literally in our country, which is this type of participation in the educational process. And so I would encourage you to continue to be participating in this process, including as it relates to House Bill 7069. This is a really bad piece of legislation. It was done in a way that is everything but democratic. It is, you talk about behind closed doors, sneaking and coming up with deals that really would not exist if this were all done in the sunshine the way it's supposed to be. We really do need public support to pay attention to educational issues because I think too often, they rely on us not paying attention and not becoming involved. And as parents, as school board members, as administrators, teachers, support staff, we often don't speak in one voice, and we have to for the sake of our children. Right now, our children are getting the short end of the stick. And if we truly want to deliver that world-class education, we have to become united as a community and speak in one voice against this type of legislation. You know, this is stuff that, you know, money is at the root of some of this stuff, which is extremely unfortunate. But what's at stake here is the future of our children, and we have to stick together on this issue. have to stick together on this issue and send a strong message to Tallahassee that we're not going to put up with it anymore. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
And Chair?
And Mr. Toyber?
To facilitate for everybody so you don't have to look it up, Governor Scott's direct phone number is 850-488-7146, and I'll repeat it two more times. 850-488-7146, and it's House Bill 7069. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toyber. And now, on Thursday, June 22nd, there's a school board workshop at 9:00 a.m. On Tuesday, June 27th, there is a school board briefing meeting at 2:00 p.m. as well as a school board action meeting at 6:00 p.m. And at this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Toyber and seconded by Mrs. Patrica, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thing is adjourned. Thank you, and get home safe. This is bad weather.